Good evening to the Brookfield Selectment Meeting of January 22, 2019. Would you please like to rise and join me in saluting?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to entertain a motion to approve an expense warrant and a payroll warrant.
You have that motion?
Second. Approve an expense warrant from 1/14/19 for $24,600. Approve a payroll warrant for 1/16/19 for $170,057.06. And then I would like to, another motion, to approve the ZBA minutes from November 13, 2018.
Should we vote the first motion?
First motion?
For the warrants.
For the warrants.
Oh.
Just say, all of us in favor?
All in favor? I'm sorry. Aye. No, okay.
No one's opposed.
Okay.
All right, now we'll do it.
Then I'd like a motion to approve the ZBA minutes from November 13, 2018.
You have that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A special town meeting will be held at 7:00 PM Tuesday, February 26, in the banquet hall at the town hall. Senator Gobie's aide, Lucas McDermott, I'm probably saying his name wrong, will hold office hours in the town hall from 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM Wednesday, February 6. All are welcome. A reminder that a winter parking ban is in effect from November 15 through April 1st for all public ways in the town during the hours of 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM. No parking on the streets. Whether or not snow is predicted, and anyone in violation will receive a citation of $25 for the first offense. Does anyone else have anything to say?
An announcement?
It looks like we've got an announcement.
You have an announcement?
I have a question. Special town meeting at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, 26th. What is the purpose?
We'll talk about that when we open the warrant, because that's the first thing on the agenda. So, first thing on our agenda is to open the special town meeting warrant. The second, we will open the warrant tonight, and it will be closed at 3:00 PM on January 31st, and we are only going to be putting only administrative articles on it. There will be no money articles at all.
Yeah?
Okay, well, we had the, the water department had come to us, and they were, a couple of their candidates that they're hiring are, that they want to hire, they're two applicants for the position, and they're quite qualified for the position. So they want, we want to be able, they wanted to be able to exceed the benefits that, you know, were set forth in the personal bylaw, personnel bylaw. So that is the reason why we're doing it. It'll just be a new section. I don't know if anyone else would like to explain more?
Well, it's just skilled positions are difficult to fill, and when you, when you have qualified candidates and there's pushback as far as benefits, we need to really understand what, what we can do and what we can't do. And right now, it's very limited as to what we have flexibility of doing.
So it's specific to the water department?
Yes.
Sort of like, open, close?
Yeah, open and close. And then if anybody, if anyone else has anything administrative that they want to do, they can do that, but it doesn't have, no money articles will be on that at all. Yeah. Don?
So that will affect our budget, correct?
That would not.
No, I don't, no, that's not going to affect the budget.
No, because the water department is still on...
The water department is, they're pretty much self-sustaining.
But we're offering benefits, comes out of our own budget.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, so it doesn't really affect us. Don, Don had his hand up if you'd like to add to it.
So it's to give us some flexibility in what we can offer to hire, and the water department is self-sustaining, so it's not come out of this budget, but...
So that, that could go across all departments, though?
The, the article is specific to the water department to give the flexibility to the water department.
Yeah, it's just, what, Karen?
There's a copy of the article.
I have a copy of the article in here. If you'd like me to read the whole thing?
No, ma'am, sir, I'll just take a copy.
Okay, after the meeting, we'll give you a copy. Okay, so that's it? So we, we're, yes, Don?
A question about the personal bylaw, is that something that also may be brought up in the special town meeting?
Well, what we're going to do, what, we're going to renumber this new section. It will be called Chapter, Section 12 of Chapter 15, being numbered accordingly. So this would be a new, this would be a new chapter that we're putting in, in a section that we're putting into the personnel bylaws.
Rather than removing it from the...
Well, we're still, we're still trying to get some answers from town council on that, from removing it from the general bylaws and just having it like a personnel handbook. And then, town council, it also, because I, I attended the MMA conference this weekend, and I talked to town council, and she said that we have to have a vote at town meeting to take it out. And then she said also that the select, we can vote to have the selectmen be the only ones that have to approve what goes into that book. It doesn't have to go before town meeting.
Okay. Also, is there any article that may be addressed on the bridge construction in reference to that?
We're working on that right now, and I know that I'm working with one from the state. She said she hopes to get everything to me in time to be able to put it on the special town meeting warrant. If not, then it'll have to be annual, but we are shooting for the special.
Right, and worst-case scenario for a project like that one, there is an alternate method other than town meeting, because all of the property is state or town-owned, where we might be able to do an in-house committee that certifies that, that we're providing that temporary right-of-way.
Because that, if, if all that paperwork can get squared away, right, an annual town meeting might expedite it.
Absolutely. Anything that we could, we could pull forward like that, that's something that's, that's a zero-impact administrative thing. So, so like Linda and Karen were saying, we've got the, we've got it with town, you know, between kind of town council and the state right now, trying to see if we can get the verbiage to put onto the warrant in time for this special town meeting. If we can't, we may have an alternative route to, to providing approval for it that doesn't require town meeting, that's fully legal under Mass. general law, because it is a special case where there's, there's no private eminent domain. And then worst-case scenario, we'll do it at the end.
Good. One last one.
Sure.
The, the town bylaws require that any new town hired employee have a pre-employment physical. Would, I don't think every employee necessarily needs to have a full physical. I do believe fire, EMT, police, highway, and probably the water department should have a physical. Anybody that's driving a vehicle and doing manual labor. I would ask that maybe that bylaw be changed to not all employees, but those that require physicals. Now, I, does that need to be run by the bylaw committee?
Yes, well, that is, is that in the personnel bylaws? Or the regular bylaws?
So I think it, I'm not certain, actually.
I'm not certain.
I would have to double-check. The other piece of it is that if we ever move to, say, you know, mandatory or even random substance testing, that would be considered a pre-employment physical, and that would apply across the board potentially?
It's supposed to apply. I think that's how it is written now. It's supposed to apply to everyone, but I'm sure the people aren't doing it, but like, and then your question, when you talked to Karen, you called me this afternoon, you wanted to know if we had a town doctor. And I think years ago, like I said, it used to be Dr. Chua, but he, he's no longer in practice. So, like I said, probably just go to their regular physician.
So we don't?
No, we don't.
Evidently. I did get a copy of the state pre-employment physical requirement that the police department uses, and I would like to use that as the format and to whatever doctors, you know, is willing to do to the physical.
Yeah, like I said, probably they could go to their primary, primary care and have it done.
We wouldn't want them to use their own doctors. So Karen, we'll get you a list of a couple of different occupational health folks, because that's probably the right place to go, is somebody that deals in employment physicals. We wouldn't want them to go to their own physician for fear of that existing relationship biasing the results, I would think.
That was my thought as well.
So...
Great. Matthew?
Is this one person or one application?
What, well, no, it would just be the, it would just be the person that is hired that would go have their physical done.
So how many applications do you have?
We had three.
So it's just...
One of those.
They live in town?
Yes and no.
So they're going to have the truck that they call?
Yep.
All set?
All right.
Any more questions on that? Okay, we'll move on to number two. It's a request to deficit spend snow and ice. And Herb recommends that we overspend it by $50,000. I'd like to have a motion to do that.
Motion to that effect.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Advisory, I implied this earlier, we approved $75,000 in the 2019 budget. We've had two snow instances, and what I'm, the advisory would recommend to the selectmen to request a, you know, some sort of itemization of what has been spent so far. It seems, you know, I'm doubtful that $75,000 has been spent so far, and if so, on what?
No, I kind of agree. I agree with you, Steve. We should have, we should have some kind of a listing of what the money has been spent out and why they're, why they're requesting another $50,000. Do you have any answers for this?
No.
You didn't have the spreadsheet attached?
No. That's the, this is the only thing she sent.
Let's just get a copy.
Did you get a spreadsheet attached with the US? I was going to say, you gave me an email.
No.
This is, no, this is all we got.
No, I'm just used to whenever they send a request, they always attach it.
This came in, this came in this morning.
I put in a call to Mr. Bobby Barnes, and I have yet to hear a reply. I'm sure he will have information, but it's, you know, we're not necessarily a, a, you know, somebody who's going to audit, shall we say.
No, well, no, actually, the...
That's why we're recommending to the board.
No, standard, I, I'm going to be honest with you, I didn't even look at the email, because I'm so used to the attachment being there when Cindy sends the request up, because she does track those expenses in-house.
The first time they sent it, they just wanted permission to deficit spend. So I wrote back and said, Cindy, I need a figure. I'm going to have to give them a figure tonight. And then she came back with $50,000.
Okay, so we just, if we could have a copy of what we spent to date?
That's what we want, a copy of what we spent to date.
I'm sorry.
And on what?
And on what, what they spent it on.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that it's in addition to the 75?
Yes, that's, yeah, that's addition to the 70, 75.
And we run about that each year, anyway?
Every year, we go through this with the deficit spending.
Correct.
Yeah, there's, there's been...
That's not, it's, we've had two snowstorms.
So do we want to hold off on this vote?
I think they had to actually, there was precipitation two other days that they had to solve.
Other, other things, I get it, but, you know...
Right. What we don't want to do is walk out of here tonight, because we've been asked by the highway department to deficit spend to make sure we're covered, we're covered.
Yeah.
And that what we need to do is get a document in here that says, this is what we've done to date, a couple of snowstorms and whatever its cost. And what we don't want to do is be in a situation where we have a freezing rain situation on Thursday and have an issue. And that's what we're, we're expecting rain on Thursday, and with the freeze today, I would say, let's not question, let's just get the documents and move on from there.
So, so when's your next meeting?
The 7th.
Okay. And our next meeting is, what, the 5th?
The 5th.
So I think we could amend the motion to include coverage of deficit spending through the 5th of February, not some nonspecific until, and request the highway department send us a documentation related to the expenditures thus far.
So you don't want to approve this tonight?
No, I want to approve deficit spending.
Yes.
Through our next meeting, so as a time certain versus a dollar certain. But with the, with a specific instruction, the highway department to send us the, send us and the advisory, the details related to the spending thus far.
I agreed to that, we agreed to that already, I thought, with Steve.
Right, I'm just including it in the motion. I'm trying to amend the motion.
Admend for, yeah, not a problem.
No problem.
Is there a second for the amendment?
Sure, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we're, then we should, then we should, again, once again, a motion to recommend, he's recommending $50,000 for his deficit spending for the snow and ice.
Right, but we just voted it as a time certain versus a dollar.
No, but I thought we were just voting the amendment that you made.
Oh, that's true, that is the amendment.
That was the amendment.
Right, for the, for the 5th.
Okay. All in favor of the $50,000?
Oh, I'm, I'm in favor. We're not going to spend it unless we need it, and if we need it, we need it.
Yeah?
I'll, I'll say no until I see the numbers.
Okay, I'm in favor, so...
Motion passes.
Motion pass. Okay, our next one is... Okay, the next one is if we'll have Jeff and Ian come up for our discussion on South Pond.
Careful with that one, it might flip backwards.
Well, to start this off, I remember the last time we spoke to the two of you, I think that the recreation committee was kind of backing off from South Pond. Has anything changed since then?
To become more formal, we had a discussion in our last meeting that we would like to surrender our budgetary money, and we believe it needs to move out of the recs realm. I think, you can correct me here if I'm wrong, but the feeling of the committee is that it's becoming more of a conservation issue than it is a rec issue. We've struggled with engagement in repairs that are necessary there. At this point, you know, it wasn't for, for Don and the Lake Association, kind of looking after some of the things, but they can't look after the fact that there's not any handicap accessibility, but quite honestly, it's so dangerous, it's almost dangerous for foot traffic as well. Ian had coordinated a cleanup this summer, got a group of folks down there where we were allowed to, after 12 years of myself on the committee, get a piece of power equipment down there to, to clean up, and we had conversations about adding sand and other things, but I would say the next day, we had a fairly substantial rainstorm, and due to what's happening down there, it basically eroded the hillside and eroded the beach. You know, we've had ongoing issues with folks littering and the policing of it. Again, the Lake Association has more courage than I'm willing to put forward to go down and confront people about alcohol on the beach, charcoal grills on the beach, the trash situation is, quite honestly, it's disturbing. We don't have a signed agreement, I don't think.
That's correct.
No, we currently do not.
No, we don't.
Ian's done a lot of legwork in that regard as well. It's come, we've come to the conclusion that it belongs outside of the scope of rec. The only way it fits into rec is that people are swimming.
Well, and then the other piece to that, Jeff, is that those that you're, we are servicing on that beach are not necessarily Brookfield residents. In fact, probably, as I've seen, it's mostly out of town rather than in town. So if you tie that with the idea that the agreement is not up to date, it's a one-year lag, and so it needs to be done, what, what we really need to do is go back to fishing, wildlife, wildlife and fish, and decide what they want to do with that beach, because they really own it. We don't really own it, and determine what to do, because there needs to be grant monies or whatever to improve the situation down there. Those monies could come from the town if the town felt like it wanted to do those expenditures, but it really boils down to the state coming up with money. This is the same state organization that we've been working with or trying to work with on Rice Corner, where they've refused us any kind of correspondence, I understand, where we have a $30,000 repair, and they don't want to pony up anything for something that's coming off their land. So it's probably time that we have a heart-to-heart conversation with wildlife and decide what our relationship wants to be on the beach.
I agree with you. Karen was telling me today, Don, were you trying to, QQLA, were you trying to negotiate a new agreement with them?
Remember when you gave us a list, which I happen to have in the South Pond folder, I believe it was from QQLA?
Oh, I wasn't, no, I wasn't negotiating anything. I was just making points of what I thought needed to be looked at in the, in the future agreement. I have not...
No, no, he didn't negotiate. He, he just gave us the list basically.
Oh, that's what it was, it was just a list.
Right, because we were signed up for a lot of things that we weren't doing as well. I mean, there was some real problems with the agreement, the way it was framed up.
Well, the rules and regulations that wildlife give us contradict some of the things that were in the agreement from the state. So that was one problem. And then the other problem was, you know, we would come to the town, and they would say, go to the state. We would, you know what I mean? It's always that back and forth, because the state's like, oh, that's the town.
Town versus, yeah.
And it was just running in circles, trying to get anything done. So we were looking at the amount of money that would have to go into the beach just to make it up to code and allow people to use it safely and keep it clean and all that.
You've got to put in at least $60,000.
Oh, yeah, that's exactly the number I was estimating, too. I'm working on another project right now, and going off of those labor numbers, those are those estimates, $60,000 easily, just to get the walks put back in and everything. So then you start thinking like, all right, it's going to be years before the beach is back to where we want it to be. What's the payoff? We're still servicing like 70% of out-of-town use.
So, so part of that beach is where the right-of-way needs to be in order to do the bridge work anyway?
I think so.
Isn't it?
No.
I thought it was that side of the road.
Well, they were going to fix, when they did that program, they were going to, the state said they were going to put up the road from that river coming down up to the park area, but they had to deal with two other organizations, and it just never happened, so...
Do we need him to repeat that for the mic?
Can you speak up a little bit, because Sharon's having some problems hearing?
Either that or pull your chair up to the table, would you?
It's amazing to see Linda and Clarence were on Rice Corner Road with me and Herbie when we argued. We did actually almost argue in Miller Street to take possession, they will take possession of theirs. Well, the state, the fellow was there before, and they said, oh, the old timers are complaining that their boats, they can't turn inside that opaculate, that we're going to make a road. Well, that didn't happen. They brought sand in, and they just spread it out, never did anything. Fishing game, field-instream, and wildlife, just, it's just, you know, when you call up, you get nothing.
You got two, you got two competing organizations within the state. You have wildlife that cares about the birds and a lot of our land in town, and you have the Department of Conservation, that's really the park organization. The beach is owned by the wildlife folks that aren't into parks and recreation and access and all those kinds of things. So I think that, that the idea of going back and having an agreement, or trying to form an agreement with them for whatever's going to happen, is really one, it really starts to say, wildlife, you own it, what are you going to do about it? If you're going to do something about it, great. If you're not going to do something about it, would you then transfer it to the Department of DCR component, such that we can in fact deal with people that are into beaches and access and all those kinds of things? And then, coming away from that, you can then decide whether or not the town has an interest or not. But, but again, I think you have to step up one. So what I would do is recommend that we solicit the new Bill Davis and set up a meeting where he comes to town, and we have QQLA, rec, if you guys can help us, because Ken, for your knowledge of the site, so that we could sit down and meet with him, or his representatives, to decide what we're going to do.
That's a good idea. I feel, I feel the same way as you do. We need to sit down and see what we're going to do with the beach.
So who's going to call the replacement for Bill Davis?
Karen.
Okay, great. Great. Thanks, Karen.
All right, if Karen's too busy, I mean, I could even...
Well, let's see what the, what date, what date he's available, based on when he's available. Let's see how many of us can be, be with him. Because I think it really has to start, there is no agreement in place.
No, the contract's up.
We've got four months or five months to get something in place for this summer. And we're, I'm kind of parked, is that we've had trash issues, lots of hard work to keep it picked up. We have the porta potty and the requirements for that, and it's like, who's going to own it?
The first idea is that if we don't have the bandwidth, the rec is not interested anymore, and I can understand, given the...
Absolutely.
Okay. And I see Ken shaking his head, no, it's not conservation committee. Can we at least touch base with either some of the folks on open space, or open it up to like, see if there's interest in, just like we have a town hall committee, at least have like, maybe like a beach steering committee, throw it out there, that if people feel strongly that they want to have this in town, then let's, let's have some folks that want to be focused just on that. And, and it's just like, almost, hey, to put it this way, in some ways, at least for this stage of it, it would be almost like the police station committee. It's, it's not necessarily going to be forever, but from a standpoint of just steering what path the town is going to take with regards to it. If we have any volunteers out there, I think it would be good to solicit that.
And it's really a shame to just let it, let it go, because, you know, years ago, there used to be, you know, people would go over, they were, you know, all Brookfield residents, and people used to have to come to the town hall and buy a sticker to put on their car saying that they were Brookfield residents, and that's the only ones that could go in, go there.
Right.
Then the Jepsons turned it over to the state.
And the Jepsons turned it over to the state, because it used to be called Jepson's Beach, because the Jepsons owned it years ago.
Yeah. So what we can do is, to best point, is the open space and rec committee, next meeting of that organization is February 13th. We had great representation at the kickoff meeting, where we had constituents from all the constituencies that are kind of more or less represented. And what I would say is if there's a beach representative or those folks that feel strongly about the beach, that they should in fact come and visit us on February 13th at 6:30 in this room to see what we want to go and how we want to go.
Don?
I agree with everything that's been said. It needs attention. Yes, it's a lot of money. We already know from the ADA report that there's deficiencies there that need to be addressed. Again, a lot of money. It's going to take a concentrated effort to move that, and I think the agreement is a great way to do it. And the one other possible thing that I had brought up previously, and that was making it a town beach, but where it's owned by the state, that can't happen. I question whether we could transfer that out of Fish and Wildlife back to the town. And I know they said it was, it would have to be paid face value for that property, but you might want to ask Herb if he has any interest in maintaining that town-owned parking lot across the street. Maybe you could swap that parking lot for the beach, then it becomes town property, it could become a town beach and residence-only, so it would get back to where it was.
Yeah, get back to how it was.
I don't know if that's possible, it was just a suggestion.
We ought to get in a room and hammer it out.
We've got to, we've got to get together and decide what's going to happen, and we've got to see if we can get a representative from the state out here.
And, you know, the Lake Association's willing to work with anybody on, you know... And, you know, the Lake Association's willing to work with anybody on, you know, the best direction.
Do we want to ask Al Jones to, at least from an assessor perspective, take a look at the evaluation of the town parcel that's on that, that stretch of road vis-à-vis the, at least in square footage, the beach itself and see, at least get the number?
I think the first, the first person to ask would be Herb, since it's, you know, the highway plows it, maintains it, maybe they would like it for some reason, maybe they don't want it, I don't know.
Yeah, we should probably discuss that with Herb first before we go, finding out values.
Okay.
Okay, all right, Dawn, thank you.
They could happen in parallel.
Oh, yeah, exactly. And one doesn't stop the other.
Force the meeting, and between now and the time that we get to sit down with these folks, decide whether or not there's some flexibility with the property.
As we're discussing this, of immediate, well, I guess it's not immediate unless you're ice skating, but concern is there are, there's at least one major pine that is totally rotted at the bottom. That really needs attention sooner than later.
Do you know if it's on the list?
I am not aware of the list, so I would say no.
There's a huge list.
Okay. It may not be a priority considering where it is and the time of year that it is, but...
But there's a pine at the beach?
Yeah, and it's, it's substantially rotted. A few of those trees probably, if they were looked at, would be.
On the list somewhere?
Theoretically on the list. But it comes, I think that issue of that tree speaks full circle to the bigger picture issue that we just discussed, which is?
State, town.
Who's paying for it?
Who's paying for it?
Who's doing the work? And it's the battle that we have fought for.
A dozen years at least.
For me, 12 years.
And so we don't have an agreement? So anything moving forward needs an agreement?
But I, I would hate to see it at the risk of somebody getting hurt, because, you know, because, right? So there's the, there's the balance there. Just bring it to your attention, make sure, see if it's on the list or whatever, you know, just so we're sure.
Yeah, just so we understand, Jeff. We fund basically 90 trees a year to be removed.
Sure.
And we're probably at 200 and something on that list.
I'm sure you have to prioritize, prioritize right, and I completely understand that, but whether it's going to the state and saying, "Hey," or however that has worked.
I'll follow up.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Yeah, seriously.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay.
I would just want to just, I want to circle back around budgetarily. When we submit our budget requests for next year, we will be removing the line item for South Pond Beach on that. Historically, maybe, if you can correctly, Dawn, maybe four years ago, I think the Beach Association started paying for the porta po, maybe four years ago. Prior to that, the entire budget was for summertime waste removal. The Lake Association graciously took that over and we used it. We, last year, we researched, we have all the research. What we have to do is, we, however we move, access to that obviously is all, we have the equipment, we just want to make sure that, you know, money's around.
Somebody's in charge.
Then our pile will be in somebody else's.
Whatever happened to the lifeguard chair that was down there?
I think, I think it was, if memory serves, there was two incarnations ago, town hall repair. I believe it was downstairs along with some, like, little lifesaver-looking, like, little technology. I believe it was all, it was all. Yeah. I believe the requirement calls for having a lifeguard. It's a lifeguard or posting that there is no lifeguard.
Yeah. It was, it's correct.
And so, how it's been interpreted in the 12 years I've been there and the signage, that's no lifeguard on duty, swim at your own risk. In fact, there was a phone down there that apparently at one point somehow connected to, to the beach. It was a lot.
And then, if, you know, we don't come to any agreements on who's going to take care of the beach, then we won't be able to have the Red Cross swimming lessons in, that's done by the Y Camp in Southbridge, because they usually go down there, what is it, sometime in July?
Yep.
Yeah, they, they request a two-week window.
So I mean, if we, so if we don't come to any agreement, you know, who's going to take care of the beach, then I don't know if we'll be able to have an agreement to have them down there or not.
Well, that, I, then...
Well, we don't, we don't have authority to have an agreement with them, because the agreement doesn't exist.
I think that's, that's four steps out.
Okay.
So, but, you know, in the, in the discussions with Fish and Wildlife and DCR, we might want to at least like communicate to the Y that the state of the beach is uncertain for next year, so that, one, they can either look for an alternate location, or, two, they can weigh in, right? So, because they do provide services to some of the kids in town, do their swimming lessons.
It's open, I think it is open just to the children here in town.
That's not true.
It's, oh, it's not? It used to be.
The swimming lessons, you know, swimming lessons are provided by the Y in Southbridge at a reduced rate for Y members and an elevated rate for residents.
Oh, so it's changed, because it used to just be for Brookfield residents.
It is not.
It is not.
It's predominantly, it's predominantly non-Brookfield.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize that.
If we go down and see who the bad actors are, it's primarily out of town.
I'd like to comment on that, we have to hesitate that it's all out-of-town people who are causing problems there. I think that people litter, and I think that it's unreasonable to suggest that it's all people from out of town. I think there's a mixture, and it's, it's my opinion that it's easy to blame somebody from out of town.
Right, because I mean, you've had trash issues even at Lewis Field, which, yeah, there's kids from other towns, but at the same time, it's a 50/50 split, generally speaking. So it's not necessarily just that it's not residents or that there's no ownership, because unfortunately, there's a lot of lack of ownership in common spaces, I guess, to just.
But that being said, it seems reasonable to me that it would become a town beach again, and I wasn't aware that at one point there was a sticker program.
Yeah.
Which is how it was when I grew up in Spencer, that's how it was.
It was.
And that's, that becomes more enforceable, you know, with the police.
Yes.
And, you know, and they can only do so much. I mean, they can't live down there, right?
No, they can't.
They drive through, but that would make it that much more enforceable, so that's it.
So it's a lot of different things to think about when we get together.
Just let us know when we need to.
Sure. Okay, well, thanks, I thanked two of you for coming in. Sharon, yes?
Can we call a recess? How many things are there that I might need to cut out?
Okay, we're going to call a brief recess of what, how long's it going to take you? Two or three minutes? Great, thank you. Okay, we're resuming the meeting, gentlemen.
Yeah, but we need to, we need to, we need to, we need to...
Can we call a meeting to order again, please? Okay. Our next thing is an appointment. We have an appointment here, it comes from the Advisory Board, they would like to have Krista Le Bruin, Le Bruin, is that how you say her name?
Yep.
To be appointed to the Advisory Board at their meeting that was held on Tuesday, January 22nd, and she will be a member until June 30th, 2019. Like to have a motion made for that.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Quick discussion?
A quick discussion.
Which slot is she filling? Who was previously in that seat, and how many does that put you at?
Forty.
Curtis Sloan was, so in other words, we have a nine-person board.
Okay.
Okay, we're at seven, this would be eight.
Okay.
And if I were select person who was not there, it would be Curtis. He stepped down as a chairman, so.
Okay. Right, so we just need to understand, because we need to align her appointment period with Curtis's? And I'm not certain if that was...
No, no, when, no, when there is an appointment like this during the year, it's up, it's only till June 30th, then the selectmen reappoint her again. She has to put into, if she wants to be reappointed again.
Yeah, that's right. Is there any, so you've got one additional slot yet? Okay.
Yeah, and, you know, we're, everyone sort of got their intent up.
Okay, fair enough.
But it's, she came to our attention during the town meeting.
Right.
Rice Corner Road, quick presentation. Spoke to Herb, she's got some experience with Holland, with Kaila Commission, she's a teacher, you know, who's all great stuff, so, yeah.
I signed before voting, though.
Yeah, I think it is, because it's at the House Met.
Oh, okay.
There is one other thing that I can just bring up whenever it's appropriate.
Oh, can we take a vote?
Yes, motion to approve.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, our next one is to pay the BETA invoice from the 2017 Community Development Block Grant for the Mill Street site.
Motion to pass.
Second.
All in, any discussion over this?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Got to pay our bills.
And they did actually deliver the services that we're contracting, so I guess that's...
Time to pay the bill.
Time to pay the bill.
It's, it's up the bottom. It's...
Page 66, or is it under that page?
No, it's on, it's on the next page, I think. It's $15,094.
Out of a block grant.
That was a block grant.
Not out of town money.
No, it's not town money.
Were you curious about what it was for as well?
Yep.
No, it was, it was the cleanup.
Yep.
Cleanup down there, at the Mill Street site.
Yep.
Our next one is a special use permit, and these are two, we'll take them and vote them all together, and...
I think there's three, I think.
Three of them, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And therefore, one event is 7/13/2019, it will be at Quabog Pond for the Mass Bath Alliance. And then, the next one will be 4/13/2019 for South Pond, and that's for the Mass Bath Alliance. And then there's another one at six, for 6/22/2019, at Quabog Pond, and that's the Boston Bass Anglers. And I would like a motion to approve these to be signed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Off the tree, Mr. Old Grant.
No.
Okay.
Not that, I think we would want to do this.
Okay, okay, we have, now we'll go on to other, and Mr. Snyder has something that he would like to tell on us at this evening.
So the town was notified today through US Mail, so that's why I was sitting in the town hall, that on December the 17th, 2018, that the state of Massachusetts recognizes the Toban Beach site as a national register of historical places. So we've reached one more milestone as far as its national recognition.
That's great.
So, again, the Open Space Group, next meeting of Open Space is on the 13th of February. We encourage anybody that's interested in open space to join us, and that one of the things that wants to be an output of open space is what are our priorities moving forward? One of my thoughts as far as a priority will be the Toban Beach campground, to take the remaining three buildings down and bring it up as pristine an area as we can have as far as park-like setting. But then we have to then decide what we need to do, or do we want to go beyond that as far as that area?
And I would like to thank Mr. Snyder for all the work that he has put into that, because I think without him, we wouldn't have gotten this recognition.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now, under correspondence, we got some more here.
Wait, wait, ma'am, I was supposed to be on the agenda today. Cameron said I was, about the tree. He told me if I had an issue, to get it on the agenda, and it's sung on the agenda again.
Okay.
Okay, well, I, I know what you're going to talk about, and...
Okay.
And I discussed it, we discussed it with Herb. He said the tree up there has been like that for 10 years, and he said it's not hazardous, and he has it on the list to take it down.
Okay, well, I disagree. It's very hazardous, and it's when the wind blows, it's moving, and it's just a matter of time.
Okay.
And it's very dangerous, and you're cutting all these other trees up on town farm road that don't need to be cut, and the dangerous ones, you're not cutting. So can we get someone up there to cut it before? There's a school bus that packs right there, and there's also tenants there, and there's also other people that stop and wait for their children, and you have this dangerous, dangerous tree limb. All you got to do is take the limb off, you don't have to cut the tree down. I talked to the owners, and they said it's definitely a town tree. Now, Cameron said that, Herb said it wasn't a town tree, but it is a town tree.
But then Herb went, then Herb went down, and he looked in, and he realized the one that you were talking about is a town tree.
Yes, they're all town trees too, there.
He said it's been the same way as it is now for 10 years.
Yeah.
And it is on the list, it's just that it's not going to properly get done right away, because there's a lot of other trees that are held there.
More than that, you can see right into half, halfway through the tree.
I don't know, he said it wasn't hazardous.
He said it wasn't hazardous, because I've, I've spoke to him about it personally.
Okay, so, you're all on notice, if something does happen, the town will be liable, if the children or the bus gets crushed. Just so you're all on the same page here.
Well, why, why is, is it, why is the bus parked up there? Shouldn't it be at a bus garage?
Right there in the corner, they let the children off right there. The trees, right, two trees up.
Yes, but the way you stated it, that the bus was left there all the time.
Well, they stopped for the, they stopped for the children.
When they stopped, picked the kids up for school.
So, as long as you know that.
We're aware.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you. Okay, our next, we had correspondence once again from Chata. They're happy to report that we have reached an agreement with Tribute Broadcasting to provide WGN, America, and multiple local stations, ABC, CBS, Fox, and CW, and digital multicast channel affiliates to our customers. And this is from Melinda Kinney, and she can be reached at 207-253-2217, if anybody has any questions. And then our next thing is, this is from the Quabog Hills Chamber of Commerce, and it says, "Each year, the Quabog Hills Chamber of Commerce salutes individuals, businesses, and organizations in the Quabog Hill area who have contributed to the betterment of our community. This year, we are pleased to present a Public Safety Person of the Year Award. The Quabog Hills Chamber Board of Directors realizes that local heroes should be recognized on a regional level, and we are proud to begin this process and are seeking nominations to help this happen. The award will recognize one police officer, fireman, or EMT who has been employed by one of the 15 Quabog region towns. The winner will be selected from nominations submitted by police and fire chiefs in these towns. We ask that you nominate an employee who has demonstrated actions above and beyond the call of duty. Please note that nominations should be based upon individual's response to critical situations or outstanding performance. The deadline for the submission is Friday, March 1st, and you can send it to the Quabog Hills Chamber of Commerce, 3 Conder Street, Suite 103, Palmer, Mass. 01569, or you can call the chamber's office at 413-283-2418." And this came from Patty Clark, who is the Director of Membership Services.
Madam Chair, point of order, I believe Mr. Gillis had stated he had some town business to discuss.
Mr. Gillis, you had some town businesses?
Yes, I do. The, the town council has sent out all budgets to all of the partners, so that's good.
The town council has sent out all budgets to all departments, so that's good, we're gonna follow up on that. I requested with all the town departments, the key departments, to schedule dates with us throughout the month of February and March, so that we can get the process going, okay? Last time we were together, I had asked Board Selectment to be the leader of that, and so I'm here to ask if we could set a date like February 28th or March 7th, as they first go around with your budget. This is not a set in stone budget, this is a, you know, let's, let's keep the process going, and from that, with deadlines, you know, surprises and things are mitigating.
Now, what days are those different dates on?
Those are both those are Thursdays, the 28th, and so we have committed to every Thursday between now till whenever, to do our job. We're gonna have a love and fun night on the 21st of February, okay? And with refreshments and holiday cheer, and you'll hear more about that coming up. But we're skipping the 14th for the Romantics on the committee of February, and then we're going right back in with, so February 21 is our love and fun night. We're looking at maybe the 28th or the 3rd, or, excuse me, March 7th for Board Select.
I told him that typically, it's the chairman that meets with me.
Yeah, the two of us usually...
If everyone's too busy, usually just...
Yeah, the two, Karen and I, the last few years, we've sat down and did the budget.
That'd be great.
So if you'd like to have the two of us come in, or...
That'd be wonderful, yep.
March 7th, because we have special company on the 26th, we'll start cleaning up after that, and the 28th, so we'll just follow.
How about March 7th?
March 7th, great, I'll send you a little...
Yeah, send us a note to remind us, okay.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Anything else from anyone tonight?
Motion to adjourn at 8:00.
But we...
7:12, you got something?
No, we, I, I'd like a motion to go into executive session under number three.
Oops.
To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares.
A motion to that effect.
Second. Lincoln and I?
Snyder, aye.
Coughlin, aye.
And then after that, we will adjourn from executive, and then we will go back into the regular session to adjourn after that.
Yep.
Thank you.